Regular meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Carey?
Present.
Chilton?
Present.
Parker?
She has an excused absence.
Hutchings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. They have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Ms. Carey? May I have a second? Ms. Hutchings, thank you. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
Yes. I would like a brief amendment to the agenda. I move to add an executive session to discuss the City Clerk contract, which was statute forty-four dot six two dot three ten C one, with a matter to discuss in public that have an adverse effect upon the finding of this problem. So may we be discussed in a secondary session. The City Clerk contract, secondary session, will be added to the agenda if I am to maintain the.
Are there any objections to adding an executive session to discuss the City Clerk contract to the agenda? Seeing none, the addition is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any object? Excuse me. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes, August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, council regular meeting minutes. August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, council special meeting minutes. New business ordinances for introduction, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-eight, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars in the utility fund for replacement of a fire hydrant located at the intersection of Birch Street and South Saldana Avenue, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two. New business other items, action memorandum twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-one, twenty-twenty-two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment of Leona Oberst to seat G, term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, introduced by the mayor. Action memorandum twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-two, approval of the twenty-twenty-two election workers and canvas board for the Saldana precinct, introduced by the interim city clerk. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app used by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on any item just read by the clerk on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a look at the Zoom and I see no hands raised on Zoom. So having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Mr. Carey?
Mr. Mayor, just a question in terms of action memorandum twenty-two dash oh-two-two on the election workers and canvas board. And just general information, normally these are people I've been doing for years, years, years. It's wonderful, awesome. Has there been significant change in the number of people willing to serve in this capacity this year?
I will pass that question on to the city clerk.
Through the mayor, the individuals that are on, that have been selected this year are, except for one, all individuals who have done this in the past, some of them many, many times. So I'm not seeing a large turnover there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Back to the question, is there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations, items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes per aggregate. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App used by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I would remind everyone to please be courteous and respectful during your comments. For those of you in the audience, I request you refrain from applauding, cheering, whistling, clapping, or boisterous behavior during the public comments. Please be respectful of the views of the speakers, even if you do not agree with them. Please observe proper decorum and do not engage in personal attacks or disruptive behavior. The council will respectfully listen to your comments. We are not here tonight to engage in a debate, but to listen to your comments and concerns. Again, comments are limited to three minutes, twenty minutes aggregate, and please provide your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is E. Johnson. I live at three, four, two, and eight Poppywood. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you and council this evening. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for being able to meet some of us have met with.
Thank you. Oh, that makes a little bit of a difference there. For being able to meet with city manager Queen, and also I've met a couple of times with Justin Ruffridge. And there has been some difficulty on those of us that have been concerned about what happened at the park concerning indecency in public, not against a particular group, but specifically just on public indecency. That's, that's been our goal, is to hopefully make some, some steps towards that happening again, through possibly some ordinance change or something like to that effect. So I wanted to just say thank you for feeling like we're beginning to be heard through at least the first couple of meetings with Justin and then Stephanie, even though we're not necessarily ideologically aligned with anyone on the council, we appreciate it very much, that very much. So in the coming days, we hope that we can continue to communicate well with you all and continue to be heard and see progress. From what Stephanie mentioned, there is going to have to be a change in ordinance to clarify some of these old ordinances that, that this, what happened in our city has produced, if you would, something that is not going to ostracize one particular group or another, but that is going to provide clarity as to what is decent or indecent in public. So yeah, look forward to that. Also, we would really like to be kept abreast of what is happening as regards moving forward on this ordinance. And we would actually really like to see some evidence of that happening, not just, not just here that it is, but actually maybe even be a little bit involved as far as sitting down and seeing what is happening regarding that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I'm Isaac. I just about expect a Christmas card from you guys by now. You seen me enough, right? So, Justin, you kind of sold to me that you were a Christian and built faith with me that way. That's...
Not personal.
Oh, so I can't address...
You want to talk to Mr. Justin later, or Mr. Ruffridge later, that's sure.
So I can't address my grievances on the, on the matter as how it was dealt with in a public way?
You're addressing it to the council, not individually.
Okay. So someone on the council approached me, made me believe they were a Christian and got good faith with me in that way and, and turned their back on me later. So I've been a bit aggressive about that. I've been a bit aggressive about the emails saying that there's been X-rated or all of this, and nothing happens. And then when you guys do address it, it was addressed at a resolution level for the park. And that's, I'm happy for you. That's great. But that is not what has been addressed this whole time. So it's almost like a downplay for that. I'll take that if I can get it, but I'm not going to stop there. I have not been as proactive as I should be in this matter. I haven't really put forth a lot of effort, but I intend to. And I intend to make some change so the moral fiber of our community does not degrade. And we need some type of ordinance to stop these things from happening. And there's a lot of talk. We spent fifty thousand dollars on a dog park. That money, none of that could have gone to making an ordinance to protect our children. None of that, you couldn't get a lawyer with the tax dollars that we spend as a local business owner, having multiple businesses. You guys have lots of money to deal with, enough for fifty thousand for a dog park, not enough to protect our children. I've never cared about any politics. I still pretty much don't, and the only reason I'm learning it now is so that I can do something about this. An individual on here also went on KTUU talking about how they're getting threatened and all this. It was absolutely absurd and disgusting, the way they tried to twist someone's word as they talked about a political way, as, you know, your days are numbered, right? And they're saying that in a political way of you sitting in a seat, you turn it around and try to make it seem as if this threat, it's, it's kind of pathetic in my opinion. Over this, it's totally cool, but I've had threats already. I'm cool with that. Businesses tried to be boycotted, whatever, cool. When it's a moral stance, I won't back down. I'm not like you guys at all. I wish I saw some courage and leadership from our council and maybe them to care about the moral fiber of what's happening in our community enough to actually do something instead of lip service and talk about how in months we're going to make something happen. Other places have already done it. Why haven't we? Why have you neglected the city ordinances for this long and not done your job and kept with them? That's what I want to know. Let's do something about it. Other states, other places in the state have this done already. Won't withstand the test of time. That's not good enough. Get a lawyer, hire him, put him to work for twenty hours, pay him ten grand and have him write something up. So till then, I wish I could take my kids to the park. That'd be great. And I'll be here, and I'm going to start being more proactive for all y'all.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Eric Ugarte, one-one-six West Red Oak. What we're trying to do here, it's not something that we're just doing in this town. In Jasper, Indiana, and South Dakota, Apex, South Dakota, they've also done the same thing. They've canceled shows because they're seeing that it's not correct to be in front of kids. So we're not the only ones here that are attacking or we're trying to attack. We're just trying to tell you this is not right. And, you know, when we hold people accountable, you know, what I would like to know, he can't ask questions here. I can't go and ask questions in your business because I'll get arrested for trespassing. I can't ask questions in the store because you guys will get me for harassment or you're afraid, you're scared of your life of me. We can't come and ask questions here. When can we? That's what we all want to know. When can we ask questions? And by us holding you guys accountable, it's not just the local thing. You know, Nancy Pelosi is third in line in this country, one of the highest positions that she has. But the Catholic Church did not let her do communion no more because they're tired of her saying that she's Catholic and doing things that Catholics wouldn't do. So they're holding her accountable. Why is it wrong when we try to hold other people accountable in the lower level? They're doing it to her. And if something were to happen to the president or the vice president, she would be running our country. So the church can do that, but we can't do that to ask people questions? That's not right. We put you in that chair so you, all of you could answer to us because we voted for you. And when you got on here, you said you would speak for us and you would listen to us. But we're not getting anything from you guys. And it's really sad. It is. You know, feelings are being taken, are taking over common sense. And that's just wrong. You know, how obtuse can people be? You know, where a man can go and put a sock on his junk and just cover his anus and Chief Meeks can't do nothing about it? That's just embarrassing for a town. I work at McDonald's. People can't believe that a little town like this exists. People love it here. They come from Africa, from South Africa, Poland. I've met a lot of people and they can't believe that a beautiful town like this exists. If we keep on doing what's going on, we're going to lose people. The lady from the Kenai Chamber was reading that people don't want to come here no more. Maybe it might be just one or two, but word around gets around, and we're going to lose the tourism that love coming here because they love that this is a city that has morals. Like I said, you go up to Anchorage, all the tourists that told me that they can't wait to leave Anchorage because people up there are rude. But they come down here to these little towns, Saldana, and people go out of their way to welcome them. And that's a beautiful thing. That's what we're trying to show our tourists, that you can come here and enjoy a beautiful town. And that's how we have to keep it. You guys are doing a lot of work on the river, on the rivers. That's going to bring a lot of tourists to us. People will pay thousands of dollars to come up here and fish, and what you guys are doing, that's a great start right there. But we got to bring the other people, include everybody, please.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Jessica Velstra, Kenai, Alaska. I'd like to express my appreciation and support for the entire city of Saldana council. I know this probably has not been the easiest few months for you, but I've been impressed with your steadfastness and professionalism throughout this time. I want to express my support of your careful and deliberate review of current policies regarding usage of the park to ensure that any changes do not discriminate against people due to a protected class. I appreciate you engaging in the process and not giving in to bullying or people who have tried to dominate the discussion by engaging in verbal threats or even physical affronting, which I witnessed myself at the first meetings regarding the activities in the park. This has clearly become a political, about a political election, although, and not about protecting children, although I have my doubts that it was ever about protecting children for some people. If people truly wanted to protect children, the focus should be on the vast majority of what harms children in our community, substance abuse and domestic violence, which together comprise more than eighty-five percent of all maltreatment of children in our community. If we really want to protect children, we need to address trauma, have ready access to treatment, have more funding to resources for domestic violence shelters, increase prevention resources and staffing for child protection. Instead, this has become a witch hunt against people who are more likely to be victimized themselves rather than perpetrators of abuse. I want to commend the city council for working for all the city's citizens, citizens for believing in democracy, not theocracy, and for carefully crafting any policy to ensure the city does not lose valuable funds by leaving policies open to lawsuits. I applaud your commitment to not allow government to overrun our freedoms of speech and expression. Thank you for your time and all your hard work.
Thank you. There anyone else here in the chambers would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Jen Brighton, Kenai, Alaska. I will be very brief because I want to echo many of the things Jessica said. I, I'm here as a local mom, as a concerned citizen, and I appreciate the time to write thoughtful policies, to be careful. I think that non-discrimination policies are important and we have to take them seriously. I see courage and leadership from the council in taking the time to do it thoughtfully and carefully. I appreciate that. I appreciate that you're listening and talking with many constituents, many perspectives, and trying to write good policy, abiding by the separation of church and state that this country established two centuries ago. I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say thank you and let you know that there are those of us that appreciate the work you're doing on this.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here in the chamber would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a look. Oh, go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Joshua Silzo. I live in the Salomatsoff neighborhood, Saldana. It's interesting to hear references to the separation of church and state. You've heard from a lot of different citizens, we're not a church. We're just people that agree on some things morally about decency. This has never been about attacking a group of people regardless of their lifestyle choices. That is not what this is, and it can easily be mischaracterized, which is one way to run a debate, but not a healthy way, and to hear the word democracy thrown out as a way of stifling free speech, not a way of promoting it, because free speech means dialogue from all concerned parties, and that we're able to talk civilly, look each other in the eyes, and treat each other like decent human beings and fellow citizens. And that, I want to be clear, is what most of us here want. I know you've heard angry voices. You've heard raised voices, but that doesn't speak for every single one of us here in this community. We are concerned for our children. This is not about promoting one religious view or even one moral view. It's about all of us agreeing that there are certain things that are evil in the world and that we should all fight against them together, and that there are certain things in this world that are worth fighting for and that we should all fight for them together. And our children are one of them. And I want to address briefly the term protected class because I think this is where democracy goes to die. Friends, we are not in the business of creating protected classes. When our founding fathers founded this country, there was no protected class. There was one class. It was citizens, and we all belong to that class. We all have a voice, and we all should have a voice. And I just want to encourage the council, encourage all of you here today. We're a part of a process. There will be times where there will be tension because that's how our government was built to function. It's okay. It's healthy. Please don't listen to the noise. Listen to the voices of reason around you that say, there is moral right and wrong here, and we should stand for what is morally right and stand against what is morally wrong, even if it costs us. So I just ask you to be encouraged, find the common ground with your community, and know that we'll support you when we believe you're doing what's right. And if we oppose you, it's just because we disagree, and we're going to do that civilly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Go ahead, sir. You state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. David Newsbaum, eighteen thirteen Aliac Drive in Kenai. A man I greatly admire, Dave Eubank, says to smile at everyone. So everyone's getting a smile, first of all. So there have been very many, very good points by people behind me over the last several weeks in regard to the immoral act in the park, but I'm going to address what I think is the very root here. Somebody once said to a group of people who had blinded themselves to truth and morality, they said, "You will indeed hear, but never understand. You will indeed see, but never perceive. For this people's heart has grown dull, and with their ears they can barely hear, and their eyes have grown closed. Lest they should see with their eyes and hear with their ears and understand with their heart and turn, and I would heal them." That was actually probably the greatest man that I admire, Jesus, speaking. He was, he was quoting from the book of Isaiah where later on he describes what happens to a society that continues to suppress truth and morality. And what happens to them is the cities eventually lie in waste with no inhabitants and, and the land is desolate and burned. Each one of us will be held accountable for our actions. Each, each one of you will be held accountable for your actions, whether in this life or the next. In, in regard to a recent email received from one of the council members, I think it was kind of a copy and paste, we've heard a lot, so this particular person, we can't name who it was, says that we've heard a lot from the community on this with a wide range of opinions. So wide range of opinions. Truth and morality should never be up to a wide range of opinions. He referenced a, a legal review memo and said that it provided a good summary of the legal considerations and limitations that the city has. There should not be any considerations or limitations in choosing to do what is right and moral. He said that he supports exploring our rules for possible revisions to clarify them and make them more transparent, but we have to do so in a way that is fair for all and does not infringe on the constitutional rights of any particular group. So making a right and moral decision should never be hinged upon whether or not they may be fair. Men have become very feckless, in my opinion, in this country as a whole, and are afraid to act on what is right because it might offend someone. And please, don't you dare label what happened at the park as, as free speech, because if you do, you have no clue what that actually means and no clue what our founding fathers fought, sacrificed, ultimately died for. And our founding fathers actually said that, you know, collectively, in a document, they said, "A free people cannot survive under a republican constitution unless they remain virtually," sorry, virtuous and morally strong. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Nine eleven being a few days ago, I want to acknowledge very much my appreciation for your service to our country. You are one of my personal heroes because of what you did before while in service and again afterwards. Thank you very much for who you are.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will go to Zoom, looking for raised hands, and I see no raised hands. So we will close public comments at this time and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number five, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or state and attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App used by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Mr. Cox?
Thank you. Tyson Cox, Assembly Member for District Four. Before I start my brief report, I just wanted to thank you guys for, first off, a great summer at the park. It was fantastic. I tried to make as many as possible, even when it was raining. And there were a ton of great bands this summer and a lot of people there, a lot of businesses there. It was, it was a very good opportunity for folks in, in our area, but also our visitors. So I do want to thank you for that. The other thing I personally want to thank you for as well is for the bond issue that's coming up for the fieldhouse. I personally very much appreciate that. And I went to the meeting last night, and I, I do want to thank you for that, too, has done very well. I got, I personally got a lot of good information out of that that I can now share with people. I got your flyer right here. And so I just very much appreciate that, and my, my fingers are crossed that it does well. Now for my report is, I'm going to assume that most people now know that Mayor Pierce did resign from office. We accepted that resignation on September sixth. His last day in office will be the thirtieth. With that, we did also at the September sixth meeting, we did appoint Mr. Navar as interim mayor. And now what we're looking at is an election process. This is the memo we did just receive from Ms. Blankenship. What we're looking at is the soonest that an election could happen, because we have to do a filing period and all those things. The filing period looks like it will be for the first part of November, or could be. I want to keep it as could be because it's not been decided by the assembly. This is just the, the quickest it could happen time-wise. And so the, the candidate filing period would be the first part of November, the first couple of weeks. We're looking at a possibility of the earliest date being January ninth for a special election. And then she had some notes on here that we could certify those results on the seventeenth unless there is a runoff, and then there would be a special runoff on January thirtieth, which would then lead us into certifying the results on February seventh. So the, the earliest possibility is the end of January with, if there's a runoff, first part of February, and then taking office after that time. Again, that's just a suggestion. We do have that in our Policies and Procedures meeting on next Tuesday, and so I'm just trying to bring people up to speed if that's something they're interested in, or just to know that that will be coming up. Most likely, I, I will assume it's going to be coming up in between the January, February time for that election. So if there's any questions, I would try to answer them.
Any questions from the council? Oh, Mr. Nelson?
And, Mr. Cox, you probably don't know this yet, but I'm just curious. Would that special election, would that be a traditional in-person election that we're used to, or is it being considered to be a by mail like we did during the COVID timeframe? Do you have any idea?
It's a good question. I don't think it's been officially answered. I do know, I've had talks with our clerk, and it is possible to do a vote-by-mail special election. In my opinion, that will probably not happen because I don't think that's something that our community wants at the moment. But that's just my opinion. That is not the opinion of the entire assembly. It will be one of the items that we end up discussing, I'm sure.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Have a good night.
All right, moving right along to the next item on the agenda is item six, Public Hearings, ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero-two-four, authorizing the survey, plating and purchase of a portion of tract A, new morning subdivision, for a purchase price of six... Ordinance 2022-024, authorizing the survey, plating, and purchase of a portion of tract A, New Morning subdivision, for a purchase price of $6 per square foot and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $48,500 in the general fund introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is the companion ordinance, which would allow us to acquire the remainder of the right-of-way to make that connection between the signalized intersection at the Y and East Readout. So people would have an opportunity to make a safer left-hand turn, particularly when traffic numbers are high. Unlike the previous parcel that we were authorized to purchase, in this instance, we're only acquiring a piece of an existing parcel. So it will require the subdivision and carving off of that approximately, I think it's about 5,000 square feet in that ballpark is really what we need to make that connection. So this ordinance would fund the purchase price of $6 a square foot, which we think is fair and consistent with what we know to be market value. And it would authorize us to engage in that plating process. We have a tentative agreement with the owner. That's included in the packet. And if the council approves this, we would move forward. I will also just update you. I already have signed and closed on behalf of the city for the homestead parcel. I think the other party was going to sign yesterday or today, and so we expect that to record tomorrow. So this is a companion ordinance, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to speak on Ordinance 2022-024? Seeing none, I'll look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. Having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one absent.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-024 passes on a 5-0 vote with one absent. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2022-025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $60,000 in the general fund for changes to the authorized personnel staffing table for fiscal year 2023, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There's a memo, very brief memo, in the packet from our Finance Director, Imholt. And as noted in the memo, at your most recent meeting, the council did authorize this reorganization within the Finance and HR Department. At the time, we communicated the fiscal impact that that would be annually is $60,000, and this ordinance would appropriate sufficient funds for the current fiscal year we're in, $60,000. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience who would wish to speak on Ordinance 2022-025? Seeing none, I'll look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised in Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Call for the roll.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one absent.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-025 passes on a 5-0 vote with one absent. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2022-026, accepting grant funds from the State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry and Fire Protection, and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $200,000 in the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund for Spruce Park Beetle Mitigation and Hazard Fuel Reduction, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Nelson?
I'll move to enact Ordinance 2022-026.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is a good example of a lot of persistent work from our team and coordination among many departments to secure these grant funds and deal with what we all know is a very large problem due to the spruce bark beetle infestation. The city received $165,000 approximately already, and this would be an additional $200,000 to deal with spruce bark beetle mitigation on several of our large parcels. And those are listed in the memo, but it includes Centennial Campground, Swiftwater Campground, our airport, and the large piece of property the city owns at the end of West Readout. This will allow us to continue reducing and mitigating the fire risk hazard from those dead trees. It's probably not going to be enough to deal with the problem, but we will continue to chip away at it in terms of moving from highest priority down. This certainly will put these funds to good use. I made a note to remind myself to mention that Parker Park is not included within the scope of this grant, but I have heard comments and questions from folks about Parker Park. I mentioned that to Scotty, our Maintenance Manager, and Andrew Carmichael, and asked that they continue to think up a strategy for dealing with the trees at Parker Park. Some of those will be on our city property, and then some of them will be on adjacent private parcels. But we'll come up with a strategy and try and identify some scope for that because it would not fall within the scope of work that this grant would fund. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber wishing to speak on Ordinance 2022-026? Seeing none, I will take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised in the Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Ms. Hutchings.
The comment, well, I guess it's a question. When we had a workshop, we talked about what the monies that we were going to put towards the spruce bark beetle hazard mitigation. And we had appropriated some money that came out of a different account. Is that in addition to these? Or is this paying that back? Or what are we doing?
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Through the mayor, I believe you're referring to the work session we had about our use of the ARPA funding. So that's the 1.1 million that the city's received. And spruce bark beetle mitigation and replanting was one of the key takeaways. I think one of four projects that we heard the council identify as a potential use of those funds. We have not made progress, frankly, in moving forward with developing a program. But we know that it remained one of the items the council wanted to see us look at. These funds are totally separate from that discussion. So I think what we might have to do is take stock of our capacity to maybe put together a new program. I think replanting trees, helping homeowners replant, was one of the ideas. We'll probably have to take a look at what we think is reasonable and realistic in terms of bringing that program back. But it's not something that we have prepared for you at this point.
Mr. Chilton.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. Through the mayor, so we actually do both. So we do quite a bit of tree removal within the Parks and Rec Department. And I know last summer, we hired a woman who had extensive forestry experience, and she was kind of leading that effort. Andrew and Joel also do trainings. They'll go out with staff. So we do quite a bit in-house already. I don't have the cost breakdown, but I know the contracts we most recently issued with these previous grant funds, we were shocked how cost-effective those services were. I don't think we could have replicated that work. But there is a pairing for our crew to continue engaging in that, I think, as well as some of these bigger contractors who can move on site and leave. A lot of this work, we have the benefit of performing the work during the winter, which is important to not damage some of these properties. It may be difficult for us to bring on additional staff in the winter. We can look at it. But I'll check with Andrew. But I wanted to just make the comment, it is a natural operational thing that we do already within parks.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Rufford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had a similar question to Councilmember Hutchings. I had remembered ARPA funds, too, but I'm just trying to be... I thought we appropriated ARPA funds, but then we didn't need them because we had grant funding that covered it. Is that my memory is right?
Thank you for that reminder, and Kyle's nodding his head, yes. And now I understand your question more clearly because I'm reminded that we wanted to move quickly before the campgrounds were opening with minimal disruption at the beginning of the summer. So we were at a point in time where we were asking the council to authorize us to move forward with that work. We had not yet received the grant in hand. So we had proposed the idea that if that grant money didn't come through, we would intend to use ARPA funds for it. So thankfully, the grant paperwork did come through with an amazing amount of speed from a state agency. We were really impressed with their assistance and support. So thank you. That does answer the question more fully. So yes, at one point, we had used ARPA funds as a stopgap to allow us to start that work quickly with minimal interruptions, which is, I realize, separate from this idea of replanting trees.
Okay. And just to follow up with...
Go ahead.
So on that note, I just have to say, this has been a huge problem, obviously, in many communities around the peninsula. And I just have a bravo to say honestly on appropriating these funds and having grant funds available to do this work. It's huge. And I think being able to spend those dollars and get that done quickly, it's a problem that we're going to be trying to mitigate, I think, for a number of years. And just being able to see that amount of funding come forward is a big deal. And thank you, guys, for the work that you're doing on that. It's really appreciated.
Any other council comments? I just have a quick one here. How much do we still have to do? Any idea on that? Looking into your crystal balls, I know you all...
I don't mean to be glib, but I mean, we'll throw you a number out, and then we'll triple it. And maybe that's also not yet a reasonable estimate. We were, you know, we thought we had a good handle on how many trees were needed in this first phase, but we were off by a factor of two. And those were just trees that were within a certain distance of infrastructure or trails or campsites. So I think we can come back with an estimate, and we'd be happy to try and pin that down a little bit better.
And the other comment I had, when we did that ARPA workshop, one of the things we had discussed is the purchase of trees, saplings, to provide to the public and to replant a bunch of these areas that had been devastated. I would really like us to go forward with that and be able to have something on the books and ready to go come next spring when people would be wanting to do some planting. So we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one absent.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-026 passes on a 5-0 vote with one absent. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2022-027, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $488,574 in the Airport Improvement Capital Project Fund for additional expenditures on the 2019 runway rehabilitation project introduced by the city manager. There was a clerical error on the agenda. Ordinance 2022-027 is not a postponed item from our previous meeting. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Nelson?
And I'll move to enact Ordinance 2022-027.
I may have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'd like to ask Mr. Cornelis to provide our report.
Thank you. This ordinance would appropriate contingency funds from an airport grant that are necessary for the completion of the runway rehabilitation project. We received an airport improvement program grant. It's 100% federal shared, no local match required. There is a 15% contingency allowable overage above the grant amount. We appropriated the amount sufficient for the construction contract. This would simply appropriate some of that available contingency funds and allow us to wrap up the construction this season and close out the grant. So that concludes my report.
And I'll just add to that, that this will be entirely refunded through the grant, still at 100%. So it's just a matter of timing and cash flow, but it will not increase any costs to the city that are not reimbursable by the...
That's, yep, correct. This is 100% reimbursable, no local match required. And the construction efforts have been authorized by FAA already. So this is a city of salat and a housekeeping appropriation, not required by the FAA.
Thank you. Good job. Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll take a look here at Zoom, and I see no hands raised in Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you. To the administration, please. Again, initially, we had a $7 million grant. And again, now we're talking about approximately half a million, $488,000. Did that increase, that, I'm going to assume, unanticipated increase, did that occur as a result of change orders?
Councilmember Carey, through the mayor, that is correct. This is the result of a change order, and I can elaborate on the context of that if you like. It's specifically regarding some storm drain work. At the conclusion of the runway rehabilitation work, we regraded, one of the main objectives was to flatten the runway, if you will. There was a vertical curve that created a sight distance issue along the length of runway. There was a significant cut and removal of material, and that material went elsewhere on the airport. Some of the drainage patterns changed out there. And so we want to ensure that we adequately remove the surface water that we're seeing as a result at the conclusion of our runway project. So we have asked for and negotiated several times with the contractor for a fair price to install the storm drain system, which was not in the original bid. That negotiation and figure was transmitted to FAA for their approval in concurrence, to which we got. And the money is available through the contingency allowance in the grant agreement. So the sequencing, the reason we're bringing this back before council is because the FAA announces the grant allocations to the airport sponsors or the city for the particular project and an amount. But the way FAA AIP grants work, the amount of the grant is the exact amount of the construction bid. And they recognize that it's unrealistic that there won't be changes and change orders according to standard practice in a construction contract, and therefore, they allow a 15% overage. And this simply would appropriate some of that extra 15% above the $7 million that we appropriated, albeit our construction contract was less than that. So it is simply an appropriation on the local level, airport sponsor level, allowing us to follow our fiduciary process.
Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. I appreciate all the information. Excellent. And given you do this, I'm going to assume that this was a project that there were multiple bids on?
Yes, sir. That is correct. I can't recall the exact number, but there were quite a few. I want to say four or five.
And I only mention that because sometimes you hear that bids come in low because they know they're going to put a change order in later and get more money. And so I appreciate all the work that's being done. It's always a concern of mine. And again, I understand there's contingency, so it's okay. there's contingency, so it's okay to spend it, but not always. Anyway, that was my concern. I appreciate all the information you provided.
Any other council comments or questions? Seeing none, call for a vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one absent.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-027 passes on a 5-0 vote with one absent. Moving on to unfinished business, postponed item, Resolution 2022-027, forming a special assessment district for Whistle Hill Sewer Utility Improvements introduced by the city manager. The motion to adopt Resolution 2022-027 is on the floor from the July 13, 2022 meeting. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. We gave a very brief report at the prior meeting because we anticipated and had requested a postponement. So I'd like to ask Mr. Zarneski to give a bit more thorough explanation of this project. And thank you.
Thank you. So on July 27, you considered and postponed this request to form an SAD for the Whistle Hill Sewer Utility Improvements. At that time, the petitioners requested to postpone to allow some additional time to work with the property owner who was struggling with the proposed cost or the assessment for the sewer line improvements. So at this time, what I'd like to do is go over that staff report that was previously given with a little more details, as Ms. Queen indicated, and get you up to speed since that last meeting. To begin with, on March 31, we received a signed petition from the Curls to form the Whistle Hill SAD. The petitioner's statement of need is included in your packet as Exhibit C. Now, we'll be referring to that packet of materials quite a bit, and specifically to Exhibit A, that map that shows the different parcels. Speaking of which, originally, six parcels were to be benefited from this SAD. Two are in commercial use, two vacant, and two are in residential use. The project sponsors circulated the petitions and received five of six signatures, or 83% signed. That meets our code requirement of 60%. There are no outstanding liens against any of the properties in the SAD. The purpose of the SAD is to extend the sewer line or the sewer main up Whistle Hill Loop to provide services to the Whistle Hill Development and all of the properties along the way. Total length of the sewer line is about 1,500 feet, and would start near the old map shop, and then continue up Whistle Hill Loop, north on Paces, and then end on John Circle. The reason for the request is the poor soil conditions in this area. The Curls have stated that their septic system has failed in the past, and other neighboring properties have also indicated that they have to pump on a regular basis to keep their systems operating. This project has not been identified in the Utility Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan or in the Utility Master Plan. The total estimated cost is just over $814,000. The method of allocation includes a split method with half being split equally among the properties, and the other half being a proportional split among the properties based on their assessed value. Administration is recommending a 50-50 cost share, and at the bottom of page 27 on your packet, which is, are the findings that we are suggesting are the reasons or the findings behind the 50-50 cost share. Some benefits to the city do result from this project. However, considering those benefits relative to the overall cost of the project, again, administration doesn't recommend more than a 50-50 cost share. One of the things that is required in this process is notice to landowners, and the city clerk did submit notice of this meeting and past meetings, and provide an opportunity for landowners to object to the formation of the district. Code allows for a 30-day period, and this was, again, done twice. No objections were received. As noted earlier, the petitioner's request to postpone was to allow the sponsors additional time to work with the property owner who was struggling with the proposed cost. And as it stands, this single parcel does not meet Soldatna municipal code because the SAD assessment exceeds 50% of the current assessed value for the land and improvements. Code does provide a workaround. It states that a prepayment can be made to bring the levied assessment to be no more than 50, that 50% figure. To meet the code, this particular property is required to prepay roughly $11,900. Again, this is because the total SAD assessment of $38,500 on this property is greater than 50% of the assessed value, which equals $26,000. On Monday, September 12, we did receive prepayment. Therefore, consideration of the SAD may proceed. There have been two changes. Actually, there have been multiple things that have occurred since our last meeting, but two changes with regard to properties that I want to bring to your attention are one, parcel six in Exhibit A, that parcel has undergone a lot split and has been subdivided from one parcel into two parcels. These two parcels are owned by the petitioners. If the SAD is approved, this will result in the cost being divided among seven properties rather than six. The second change is that on this Monday, I received correspondence from the petitioners that stated that they would not only provide the previously mentioned prepayment, but also that they've agreed to terms to purchase the parcels currently owned by Scott Anderson, and that are listed as Parcels Number Three and Four on Exhibit A. So with those additions, the petitioners will own five of the seven benefited parcels. Another thing that has occurred since our last meetings, the prime interest rate has risen. It's increased again. Now it stands at 5.5%. Our code requires 2% plus the 5.5 for when those costs are assessed. And then last, for your information, I do have some historical information that was provided and pulled together by Melanie Imholtz, and it takes a look at past SADS and how they compare and contrast to this request. These SADS range from 2000, as far back as 2005. So, looking at that information, one of the things that we found is that for those six SADS from 2000, dating back to 2005, the project costs ranged from a low of $180,000 to a high of $544,000. Three of those six projects were funded by the city at 50%, and three at 75%. One of the projects was the Ty E Street Improvements, and it had the lowest number of properties affected. There were 12, while the Flower Street Improvement Projects had the highest number of properties that were affected and assessed, and that was 57 properties. That Flower Street project is really a bit of an outlier, and if you disregard that, that project, the average number of properties in the SADS was 17. Total assessments per property range from a low of 2,600 to a high of 12,000. And if you look at, then, breaking that down from total assessments to monthly payments, the monthly payments ranged from a low of $31 to a high of $131 per month. And with that, I'm going to conclude my staff report and turn it back to the mayor.
Ms. Queen, do you have anything else to add to it?
Not at this time, though. We'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber wishing to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Mary Kroll, 36156 Tremolo Circle. Whistle Hill has undoubtedly added value to the city of Soldatna. We are creating businesses that cities desire, that attract visitors, serve the local population year-round, and we provide jobs to approximately 30 skilled and talented employees. Put that all together, and we've created a destination. Whistle Hill gives people a reason to stop in Soldatna. Our Tesla Superchargers are seeing regular use and allowing Tesla owners to now experience the peninsula. We are also seeing returning guests from Anchorage and Homer, and we are experiencing record sales in Addy Camp and set a sales record last month in Brewett 602. We recently purchased two new hydroponic farm containers, which will allow us to offer a larger variety of fresh produce year-round. One of our new containers is specifically designed to grow up to five different varieties of corme mushrooms. Our solar farm is under construction, with Phase One set to be operational in about two months. While the solar project doesn't generate income for the city, it does contribute to the increasing demand for sustainable energy development. Our Alaska Railroad boxcar will be converted into an Airbnb, and we expect year-round occupancy due to the increasing popularity of unique lodging experiences. Alaska Railroad Railcar 701 arrives in October, and while we are still exploring new business ideas, its addition will create even more interest in Whistle Hill. All this put together makes Soldatna attractive to visitors and enjoyable for locals. We are committed to providing quality of life benefits to the community while expanding high-quality commercial development. We are within the future Sterling Highway Safety Corridor project, and access to Whistle Hill will greatly improve upon completion. We are very proud of our gateway sign in front of Whistle Hill. We realize that our development has never been directly identified as a priority city project for the city. We have only existed four and a half years, and have, in that short amount of time, shown our commitment to provide Soldatna with a development that is truly unique and long-term. All three of our children have chosen to settle here and are also committed to our vision and to their community. Whistle Hill just isn't another family-owned business. It's progress, and I think that's what the city of Soldatna encourages. Even before this growth, our septic system has become overwhelmed. Last month, we experienced a flooded basement twice during dinner service, and pumping has become more frequent and necessary. Our future depends on this extension. We have made a significant, long-term investment in our community, and we are asking that you make the same investment in us by approving the Special Assessment District. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Ruffridge?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mary. I was, thank you for speaking to that. I appreciate that. The, I have not looked at the plans for the road development. How will that change, if it does change, access in and out of Whistle Hill?
I don't really know, but I know that the Sterling Highway will go from what it currently is to four lanes and a turn lane, from Sterling to Fred Meyer.
Right.
And that's slated to be next year.
Okay.
So I'm guessing it will increase visibility. I don't know which side of the highway they'll level, but I think it'll make Whistle Hill more accessible and certainly safer to access.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Henry Kroll, 36156 Tremolo Circle. Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and city council members. Once again, we come before you. This time, we're ready to move full speed ahead, unlike last month or two months ago when we met last. I don't know if I have a whole lot more to offer than my wife just indicated, but I do want to mention that there was reference made in our letter, our supporting letter that came with the application, that we do want to ask for increased level of support from the city, 75%. This project is not only very important to us and our businesses, but we think it's very important to the city also. And this increased level of support doesn't just mean more money in our pockets. It means allowing us greater expansion. And we have not only a lot going on right now, I don't know how many of you have been up there to see what we're doing right now, but there's a lot going on immediately. But we have plans to do a lot more, and we are literally hogtied by a lack of a sewer system right now. So having that would be very helpful. Having city support at 75% would also be immensely helpful to allow us to continue to development, continue development, and to add even more development in the future. Our goal is not just to maintain status quo, but to continue building upon this. We really appreciate your consideration for this. We appreciate your support for this resolution, and hopefully you'll consider support at 75% cost share. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
So, Mr. Kroll, I believe when you were here the last time, we had agreed to a percentage not to exceed, in other words, 25% of what the cost was going to be, not to exceed $100,000. Is that correct?
That was correct. That was when we were going to do a privately, a private connection to the sewer line. So that was before we considered the Special Assessment District. We've since abandoned plans for that, and now we're pursuing the Special Assessment District.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Brian Irwin, 104 Woodhead Court, Kenai. I own Frames and Things. I'm a renter. The Curls, as you can see if you've been up there, are, they have a vision, and this is not a small vision. I think anything that you think about and make a judgment here today, anything that you throw their way, 75%, 50%, not my department, but their vision is not just a small development. This thing is going to grow. They are aggressive about it. And as a renter, I can tell you, I've had more people this year come in and say, this is the coolest thing Soldatna has. The park is great. I mean, you guys do a great job, but this is a destination. No one drives by that train and goes, oh, train. They just keep going. I've had more locals, Alaskans, tourists just floored by everything up there, and what is the vision of what is up there. And as Henry said, and as Mary said, it's going to grow. It's going to continue to grow. You're going to have more tax income because there's going to be more businesses. And my business has grown since I've been up there. August was also our largest month ever. August has never beat July before. It did this year. It's going to continue to grow. I think it's going to be very positive, and there's going to be a lot of recouping of those funds because the value of that property is going to continue to go up, which means they're going to be paying more taxes too. So keep that in mind. I just think it's a great opportunity for Soldatna to expand a direction that I think is the only place that Soldatna gets to expand at this point in time, which is, well, towards Charlie's, unfortunately, but now it's not Charlie's anymore. So you have an expansion, a line that's going to go in, and hopefully other people can tie off too. You've got some properties back there that maybe some point in time, they want to jump into a sewer system too, instead of the septic issues that they have up there. So that's all. And I thank you for your time and appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
No questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject, Resolution 2022-027? Seeing no one here in the council, I'm looking at the Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Having no one else wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to begin with, to our manager, would you anticipate that this project would have come on our five-year plan soon? Or maybe I should do it. Why wasn't this on the plan before? Maybe that's why.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Through the mayor, I do not anticipate that would have been the case, and it's because of the cost of this project relative to the number of potential users it can serve. So, most of our infrastructure expansion is driven by demand, and some projects, the cost exceeds the ability to recoup that investment through the new users that are going to tie in. But I think that equation changes as commercial demand changes. So we hadn't previously seen demand in this direction, heading kind of north along the Sterling out of town. But new developments, new subdivisions, new interest is the type of thing that would cause that economic equation to be revisited. I'll look to see if Mr. Cornelis or Mike Allen, our utility manager, are also in the room, if they have additional comments.
I can also, I guess, add that the five-year CIP, you know, we do two separate five-year CIPs. There's a general fund CIP and a utility fund CIP. And the utility fund CIP is seen through the lens through the lens of the utility, which is wholly subsidized, paid for by its ratepayers. So unquestionably, there are economic benefits to different elements in our city, but from a utility-only perspective, those funds are competing, you know, for the utility assets, the citywide, and those ratepayers. So that includes the wastewater treatment plant, sewer lift stations, and, you know, water mains, et cetera. And then, as far as expansion goes, you know, oftentimes, again, through the lens of the utility fund, it's looking at the number of customers that it's bringing in and the revenues that it's bringing in. Certainly can't discount the ancillary benefits because, you know, municipality agencies do look at that because if you build it, they will come is certainly a mantra that can be true. So that's a little insight into the five-year CIP.
Just to interrupt here for a moment. If there's no objection, I was going to reopen the comments. There was a hand raised on Zoom. If there's no objections, I'm going to go ahead and do that. Meredith Sherwin, you had your hand raised.
Hello?
Go ahead. You state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hello. My name is Meredith Sherwin, and my address is in Yukaipec, California. And I represent the owners of the parcel number one on Exhibit A map. And this parcel has been in my family ever since my grandfather first was there in Alaska wanting to develop it for a trailer park back in the 1960s. And as I was a child coming there, all that existed in the early 70s and all was the map shop. All the way out to that part of the city, there was no development at all. And so I would like to request that you consider this resolution and that I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to grow that portion of the city and to bring in more revenue and to have an enjoyment of all the different activities that, and all of the benefits that are available out there that have come up in the last four and a half years that I have been learning about. And so I'm just amazed at the growth and how it has started to move out. Like I said, it was just the map shop. That was the only way we knew how to find our property back long ago. But I would love to just request that you consider this resolution. I think it would be a benefit to help the landowners and the growth in that area. I think it's very beneficial and would love to see you recognize it with that 75% offset for the cost. It would be very beneficial for the landowners and I believe for the city as well.
Any questions for Ms. Sherwood? Sherwin? Saying none, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
We'll bring this back to the council. Any further comments? Ms. Hutchings?
So the Exhibit B I see here is 50% participation, which exceeds our $100,000 that we agreed to a few months back. So if we went with Exhibit B, which means we would be coming up with basically half $400,000, what kind of fees would be charged to recoup that? How are we going to charge for sewer when they're not taking our water? And right now, that's how the water and sewer bills are calculated.
Through the mayor, I don't know if Mr. Cornelis or Mr. Allen can speak to, I think, sewer fees for customers or sewer-only.
Councilmember Hutchings, through the mayor, can you maybe repeat the question for my benefit?
The question is, right now, water and sewer is calculated by how much water goes through the water meter. Since they're not going to be getting our water, how are you going to calculate the sewer portion of it? And when you are doing the calculation, how are we going to make enough money to recoup our $407,000?
I'll answer the simpler question first, which is the second half. Mathematics would be their rate, you know, divided by the cost and the projection of years for repayment. I don't know what that is, but it will be a long time, just for the rate. One methodology is to require a meter to be put on their well water that would, you know, provide the number of gallons that they consume that would then likely be the amount of discharge that we receive through the collection system.
Any other council comments, questions? Mr. Ruffridge?
First, a question just to the, and I really appreciated the testimony of Ms. Sherwin about the expansion, and we've heard a couple of times here about progress and economic drivers. Certainly, going down that corridor and having an expansion of a roadway, there's a potential that that becomes an area of further development. What do we have as a thought, since this was not on the five-year CIP? Is there potential? And what would it take to continue? I'm just thinking, if we're tearing up a road anyway, I mean, is there an opportunity to also expand water and sewer out to what could be commercially available properties in that direction?
Well, we're going to tag-team a lot of these answers, but through the mayor and Councilmember Ruffridge, I'll start. First, one comment on the five-year CIP. As you know, that's our planning document for what we anticipate the city undertaking in projects. For a project not on the CIP does not mean that the project can't move forward, and in fact, that's one of the reasons why this SAD process exists, is for property owners to bring a project to the city that otherwise wouldn't have made the cut and through this cost-sharing arrangement, move that project forward. We would really have to take a hard look at extension beyond this property. Right now, we're currently engaged in a rate study. We're doing the water and sewer rate study, and we've got HDR, the firm, taking a look at that. One component of that rate study is that we deliver to them our anticipated capital expenses over the next five-year period. Sometimes they look at 10 years, and then they'll come back with recommendations about changes to our fees that would impact the entire user system needed to achieve those projects. So when we were engaging in that, we're currently, in order to be as realistic as possible, we had them model as if this project were funded at the current recommended amount. A slight change wouldn't really, I think, have a significant impact, but the point I'm making is that every capital project of this magnitude does then impact ratepayers of the entire system moving forward. And a suggestion that if we were to consider, you know, trying to get the system extended further down the Sterling, we would really have to take a look at what we thought those costs might be before we could come back with some thoughts about what that impact would be to the 2,000-plus users in terms of monthly fees. It's a hard question, but it's an expensive stretch of extension of land, and typically, a lot of times, it has to do with density. So the projects that make the most sense to extend to be recouped by user fees are areas where there's very dense development. That's not what we have along the Sterling Highway moving north. So these very big parcels where you might have a commercial project or a smaller number of users with the ability to tie in, those are the ones that require a very, much more fiscal analysis, I think. So we can't answer that question other than to provide maybe some additional context and things that we would think about if we were going to try and tackle a question like that.
Yeah, so I guess we're sort of living in some unprecedented times as far as infrastructure dollars and things that are coming out of. And I was talking to a gentleman the other day who's right across the street, kind of moving down the hill. He just broke ground and is apparently building a, like a clinic of some sort just past Whistle Hill on the right. And I think maybe there was a lack of desire to build in that direction because nobody wanted to be neighbors with, you know, a place that was our previous, you know, welcome to Soldatna sign. And now that that's gone, potentially, there's going to be opportunity to expand in that direction. Do you think that there would be available infrastructure dollars that come in? Grant-wise, I know we're very good at getting grants and things like that. It just seems like an opportunity that might be there. I don't know if that's something that's out there because you guys look at that more than I do.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Ruffridge, through the mayor. The current grant programs that we're aware of, even through the infrastructure bill, are still the same programs that had already existed before that bill was passed. So Mr. Allen, our utility manager, was in Anchorage last week as one day of that federal symposium was dedicated to DEC revolving loan program. That's a familiar program. It's a formula-funded program that had been funded in the past, and they are still not talking about new programs. So the projects that we're putting forward, three of our projects that are the highest priority that we've got on their radar, one is the de-watering project, you know, we're trying to get that done. One is pH control at the wastewater treatment plant. That'll help, we think, in compliance with our effluent. And the third was improvements to the headworks building. Those are three projects that we've been spending a lot of time talking to the agencies about, but we're still not aware of any new grant program which would fund even those priorities because they're still only talking about this existing revolving loan program. And that program we're familiar with. It provides great opportunities. Sometimes it provides loan forgiveness, so we're going to keep a close eye on it. A new extension of a mainline or a service would have to compete within that existing criteria, and we would just have to look at whether those fit. There's still the impression out there that there is so much money available, but the reality is the programs don't yet exist to fund new infrastructure, except with very specific exceptions.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
Mr. Ruffridge was referring to expanding the infrastructure and doing water along with the sewer, but isn't that a real issue for us because we would have to push the water up the hill? At one time, we had looked at putting in a well at Birch Ridge that would come this other direction. So I don't know that really what we're going to be able to do is push water that direction. Is that not correct?
Ms. Hutchings, through the mayor. Yeah, you are correct. In our master planning documents, it recognizes the limitations on the pressure system for our existing distribution mains, and we would require either, Mr. Allen actually had a good alignment coming from our existing water tank off of Karen Street, sneak it over, or we actually have identified as a priority to acquire a piece of property for a pump station, lift station to push it up there. So you're correctly, do not currently have adequate pressures to go up the hill with water.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Carey?
It is always very difficult to put into specifics vision, particularly when you talk about what would be an awesome and is an awesome destination complex. I very much want to see us support this. I've only been up there twice, and two weeks ago, had a dinner with someone with the Bishop Sattick group as we were closing on our new building. We want to see the city continue to grow and thrive. And again, having this type of a destination, I see in terms of bringing tourists in, very much, but I also see a huge opportunity for our children. The railroad industry and its importance to this country is unheralded as it should be. We may, here in the next week, find out if indeed there is the massive strike of railroad service throughout the Lower 48 that is being discussed. I think people are going to understand much more clearly how important that industry is currently today, but looking at the history of it and looking at the uniqueness of that, I just, I'm just very pleased with this. I think it will open up that area. And again, I see it moving forward much further. I'd like to move to amend the ordinance before us, if that's in order at this time.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to move to amend that we modify where the ordinance says 50%, that we modify it to a 75% on the part of the city. And if I can get a second, I'll speak to it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Discussion.
You know, in looking when we started, that there were six lots. Obviously, that meant by our calculation, each person, each lot owner would do 1/6 of the cost. And then we saw that one of the lots was split in half, and so it's now seven. So each person would do 1/7, and it was by the people that had the most, which meant they were taking on more of the overall cost. So again, I'll say kind of an outlier in terms of the project, would no longer have to pay 1/6, but 1/7. And so I'm just looking at the financial side of the people putting this in. They're helping the others, again, in this overall development. This is the right thing to use our funds for. It is a right time to do it. A huge amount has already been spent. This isn't someone with a blank lot saying, "I'd like this, and then we'll start working on it." This is someone who has already spent a very large amount of funds. They have brought very unique items up there. They've arranged them. This is absolutely that destination spot of people from all over coming down. And as we know, with all of our other things that bring people here, although they may be focused on a particular place, maybe the sports center, maybe the river, maybe Whistle Hill, they spend their funds in many other places within the community. And I believe this is a very valid exercise and opportunity for us, and I hope the council will consider my amendment, and I hope that we'll approve this overall. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this has been said earlier tonight, just point of clarification. The cities match for this, whether it be at the 50% or 75% mark. That's not coming out of revenue from just general taxes. That's not our general fund. This is being paid for from the utility fund, which is entirely paid for by our ratepayers, the people that actually use these utilities. Looking through our capital improvement plan specific to the utility fund, just in the last couple of years, the average allocation that we make for capital projects for the utility has been around the $500,000 mark. I see that in FY '23, for example, we'd allocated $650,000. So at the 50% proposed match, that's already 63% of the total amount of money that we've allocated for utility capital projects. Increasing this to 75% makes this one project account for 94% of the entire budget of money that we've allocated for utility fund capital projects that has to be paid for by our ratepayers. This isn't coming out of tax money in the general fund. This is going to either be increased rates that our residents have to pay, or we take away projects that we're improving, like the new well and booster selection that we're looking at in FY '23. So I just, I think, I support this project. I absolutely do at the 50% mark. I think that's already very generous on the behalf of the city, but I do have legitimate concerns about either depriving the city of needed infrastructure upgrades or seeing significant increases in rates that residents have to pay to benefit a small portion of the city. I know economically, this has great benefit to the entire city, but I'm just trying to, you know, I think we need to consider the actual rates of individual people that live in the city that are just trying to get through day-to-day have to pay. So I guess my question through administration would be what your opinion would be of the 75% mark, if that's swingable financially? And in addition to that, what the impacts you would see to rates would be? And if we're not going to increase rates, what capital improvement plan project items do you want to cut to make this possible?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson, through the mayor. These are difficult hypothetical questions to answer. So I think that one answer would be absolutely the city can afford the project in that we have sufficient fund balance in the utility right now because we pay 100% upfront and then we get repaid over time. So the city has a fund balance that could accommodate an expenditure of this size over the next, you know, 12 months to pay for it. I can't tell you what the difference will mean in terms of a rate increase, but we've been a couple of years without a rate increase, and it's likely that a rate increase is something that we bring back to the council to consider regardless, in meaning to achieve the projects that are already on our five-year plan. Those projects, as well as this project, as I mentioned, we had them plug in a number for this, may already suggest that a rate increase is appropriate over the next five years. Now, we need to get that work done and come back to you with those numbers, but it is really difficult because one of the unknowns is how much, how successful will be in federal grant money coming in. So if we are successful in receiving additional, either principal forgiveness through the revolving loan fund, or if our projects stay in the congressionally designated spending category and make it to the end of the federal funding bill... category and make it to the end of the federal funding bill, that frees up some capacity that we would have otherwise spent. So, again, I hate to not give you an answer. That's the best, I'm answering that to the best of my ability with the uncertainty that exists.
Got it. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Carey, for bringing forth that amendment. I think this speaks to a couple of things, and to Councilmember Chilson, I really appreciate that thoughtful point on utility fund balance. And I think one of the things that I've noticed quite a bit during my time on the council, we've had this discussion when we come to the utility fund, is the fact that after our initial rate increase that happened over the course of those five years, we do actually have a relatively aggressive rebuilding phase that's currently going on in the utility fund, trying to build up to where we have that level of emergency funds available. Some of the rationale I thought behind looking at some of the rate studies was because we were maybe wondering if we had gone a little too far in our initial rate increase because we were continuing to build fund balance. Was there a time to dial that back? I don't think I have a big concern necessarily about being able to mitigate that through the utility fund, especially when we currently, I think I just pulled it up here, in our fiscal year 2022-23 budget, you know, there's going to be a projected $480,000 change in fund balance from year over year. And, you know, that's dollars that we can use for these, and that speaks, I think, to what do we prioritize? I think economic drivers, especially in a small town, when you have projects that want to build, you know, to your point about this isn't just a blank piece of land that is asking for infrastructure, this is a place that is investing in our city, and it's a small business. And I think that is really the heart and soul of Saldatna. It definitely matches our master plan. This is the type of business that we want to support and that we want to be engaged in. I don't have the same concerns, I don't think, about our ability to mitigate that from a financial perspective, obviously unless some of these very hypothetical things change. And I think I would be supportive of moving forward with this at the 75-25 rate, given those things, and I think we should support driving economic growth in our city and promoting small businesses. I think that's very important. And one of the things that we, I know we're talking about rates and different things like that, but this is bringing in a significant level of tax revenue to our city as well, the more that we grow businesses, and that's why I talk about the opportunity that kind of exists now, going out that, you know, Sterling Highway corridor with road improvements and things of that nature. So, certainly, all good things, good things are happening, and I think we should be proud to be a part of it.
Mr. Nelson?
So, I'm supportive of this at the 50% level. I'm on the fence at the 75% level. There's benefits on both sides, but, you know, I thought about this a month or so ago, and again, tonight with good discussion. I'll echo Mr. Ruffridge. I mean, having, driving small business and driving tax revenue and having people have their best months ever is certainly very, very good news for the city as a whole, as well as the city's finances. SADS aren't perfect. They aren't always the best thing, but they also do have people put skin in the game and be able to have a cooperative effort, and the city is fortunate to be able to essentially be the bank, you know, for a short term to be able to fund this. So, this may not be the best cost-benefit analysis of a SAD that's ever been there, but I'll roll the dice, and I'll support this project, and I think I'll support it at the 75% level as well.
Any further comments? Mr. Chilson?
Just following up on my previous questions. City manager did confirm that we have budget to support this, but I didn't get a clear answer on if that was contingent on cutting other items, or are you confident that we would be able to continue moving forward all the capital projects that we previously planned on the five-year CIP for utility if we do this at the 75% level?
Let me, Councilmember Chilson through the mayor, thank you for the question. Let me try and answer, and then Kyle, will you please correct me if I'm wrong? The city does not have sufficient budget to do all the projects in our five-year capital plan even right now. So, that would be contingent on us being successful in achieving grants and potentially rate increases, but the timing of those projects are dictated by the council. So, if those projects move out further in time, then that changes the whole game. We have probably not, in a five-year period, built all the projects in our five-year capital plan. I can't remember that happening. Typically, they move out in time. We're going to be waiting. But to answer your question, I think specifically, the city does not have sufficient fund balance to build out the five-year plan at this moment. So, we will have to continue to be looking for other outside funding, long-term low-interest loans, grants, et cetera.
But this project aside, even with the introduction of this project, it wouldn't really functionally change the way we proceed forward with our five-year plan? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, either way, we kind of have to pick and choose?
To answer that question through the mayor, I think we will just respond accordingly to the council's priorities. So, if this project is approved and moves forward, we will make that happen, and I can't say that it's going to, it's not going to knock a project off the list, and I can't have an amount of time that it's going to push everything back. We will just continue to deliver projects as they're identified as priorities by the council. As you mentioned, it's a significant size project. It's relative in size to what we might spend on a capital year, but we can make it happen. So, really, we're just looking, I think it's more of a prioritization of the council, and if you want to approve this project, we will deliver it, and we'll continue to work to deliver the other priorities.
Any further discussion? Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I have a couple of thoughts on this. I have seen other businesses in town that have had to pay for all of their water and sewer hookups. Fred Meyer was a very good example. There was a lot of line that had to be brought in there. And the other thing that concerns me is we have a lot of small families in town, and I can remember the last time we made a substantial rate increase, and I walked out of this building, and I was hearing from all these parents that we're having a tough time adding another $20 or $30 to their bill for their water, and I'm concerned that we don't know what our increase is going to be, because I think that is something that you really have to think about. You know, I'm going to be able to pay mine. I've got my house, and I've got a couple of commercial buildings, but it's the small guy that is going to have a little bit tougher time. So, I'm only going to go for the 50%. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chilson?
How about we split the difference? I would move to amend the current motion to amend, to change the value from 75% to 62.5.
To what?
62.5. Split the difference.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So, now, we're going to have some discussion on the amendment of the amendment. So, we're at 62.5. Any discussion? Mr. Chilson?
I think we've talked through this in depth enough. I'll let the motion go forward and be voted on.
Any other? Mr. Carey?
I think this is a very good, pragmatic way to move forward on this, and I appreciate it.
Anything else? Call for the vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Vote on the Second Amendment, Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one absent.
Okay, so, the amendment to the amendment passed 5-0. Do we need to take a vote on that 75% one at all?
It has been amended, so that is yes.
Okay, so, we're back to the main motion, and that would be Resolution 2022-027 at 62.5%. Any further discussion? Saying none, we'll call for the vote on that resolution.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one absent.
The Resolution 2022-027, as amended, passed on a 5-0 vote with one absent. So, we'll move on to the next item, which will be mayor and council reports. Mayor's report. Been busy the last couple of weeks, a lot of different meetings. Can't remember all of them, but the one I attended the other night, or the other afternoon, was Partnership Roundtable, a community assessment that took place at the Public Library, and it's dealing with, let me get the right wording here for it. Vital services for surviving and thriving in our community. Some of those discussion points were, five for survival would be housing, food, mental health care, medical, dental care, and transportation, and five for thriving were parent support, early childhood learning, community schools and school board, healthcare, which falls under the community schools and school board, youth mentor, and job training and higher training. They're going to continue having some meetings. They want to get the city involved in some of these meetings, and they asked me who the great contact person would be, and it was Mr. Zarnesky, so he may be getting some calls on it. This is something we kind of discussed at AML. A couple of the items that are on this list, housing and childcare were very important items that the AML spoke about, and for this group, those were the same major items. So, that's something that's coming up in the community. There's more stuff to be coming here shortly on affordable housing and our homeless issue that's in the area. So, we'll be seeing more things on that here in the future. What else? 9/11 was Sunday. It's a date to remember in all of our history, and we did, there was an event down there at the city, Saldatna Creek Park, for honoring the first responders, police, fire, EMTs, and things like that. I was unable to attend. I was involved in another thing involving veterans for 9/11, so I was unable to attend that one, and I hope somebody was able to make it. So, I probably had some more things I could talk about, but I can't remember what they were all, were, but I did issue two proclamations. I don't have them here in front of me, but one was declaring September 25th through October 1st is Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Cancer affects a lot of us older folks, and, you know, we've seen our lifetime, but it's the young kids that haven't, and we should do everything we can to help support cancer research and treatment for the children so that they can live a long and healthy and productive life like we have. The other proclamation is declaring September a suicide awareness month. Here again, that's a subject that affects our communities, all communities. It's a terrible thing to go through. I've known more people than I'd like to admit that have committed suicide for one reason or another, and one of those biggest groups right now that we should all be aware of is veterans. Very, very many veterans, for one reason or another, are on the suicide list, and we should do everything we can to support suicide awareness and treatment, which would be in mental health care and everything else, and I think that's something that our entire community really needs to be very involved in, if not more involved in. So, that finishes my comments for now, and we'll move on to council reports on boards and commissions. Park and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. So, the Parks and Rec Board met here just two weeks ago on September 1st. They had two items that they looked at for approval. They discussed some placement of a salmon sculpture at Saldatna Creek Park and had a good discussion on that, and also had quite a bit of discussion on some changes to projects over at West Reedout and as that affects across the river. So, certainly some things I think we'll be seeing, but very, very good discussions there, and a lot of discussion about, again, just really how I think our Parks and Rec really defines Saldatna and how much importance they have to folks and to our quality of life. So, it's a good discussion there. There was, we welcomed Ms. Scudder, who we confirmed last meeting to the, her first meeting at the Parks and Rec Board, and also discussed a briefing from Mr. Carmichael and Ms. Cleane just about the ordinance revision process for park use and what that board may see, and that was the meeting of the first.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Nelson? Okay, moving on to the next one, Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, Executive Director Shannon Davis came and was able to present the quarterly report on chamber ongoings at our last regular council meetings. I don't have too much more to add beyond that. We did since meet as a board of directors, and there were a couple additional items discussed at the meeting that were not covered during the regular quarterly report to council. Just kind of working through my list here. The Chamber of Commerce has applied for an Our Town Arts Grant in partnership with the city and Vision Saldatna as the required nonprofit entity in that grant application for the development of an arts and culture master plan for the city. Additionally, with the city, they have extended, finalized and extended a facilities use agreement between them and the city to manage the visitor's center, and there was a small cost increase or increase in funding there to address cost of living and other operational cost increases since we last renewed that. The working relationship between the city and the chamber continues to be good, and they work on cost sharing where possible. For example, they just renewed a mutual agreement with a local media production company for media services that benefit both the city and the chamber simultaneously. Additionally, they did Sunset, the student ambassador program. That was a kind of a really cool outreach effort they made with the schools to get students involved with local businesses, and there's a scholarship component to that. However, coming out of the COVID pandemic, there was unfortunately a significant drop in participation in that, and there just hasn't been able to, they just haven't been able to get the engagement to keep that program moving forward, unfortunately. There's a lot of discussion on the visitor's center and need to address facility growth there. For example, one of the things that we ended up talking about for a while was just bathroom facilities, and there might be 45-minute wait times sometimes for people coming through there trying to use bathrooms when seeing our visitor's center, and that's been an issue with growth, and discussion on how we would address that. And lastly, the chamber will be hosting a city council candidate forum. I believe that's tentatively scheduled for September 28th, and this is in addition to the one that was recently hosted by the Council of Clarion and KDLL. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to address any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Mr. Chilson? Okay, moving on to the next item, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'm going to hand out some materials about the Field House project. Our team has been attending a lot of meetings and spending a lot of time talking about this project, and I wanted to share with the council those materials that we've generated. The first was a mailer that went out to all homes with registered property owners in the city, and that's the postcard that you see. We printed that ourselves, but the actual mailer came from a professional printer in Anchorage. It looked a little nicer. The second one is a more detailed fact sheet. Sure, yeah, we've got extras. Let's get them out there. Thanks, chief. The second one is a more detailed fact sheet, and this was generated in response to some of the presentations we gave and some of the specific information we shared, and folks in the room thinking that that was really helpful to know, and so asking if we could put that together in a document that they would be able to have, read through, share with friends, and be able to answer some of those questions. So, that we handed out at the meeting yesterday of the supporters of the Field House, and with the intention of also making it available on our website. We were having some trouble with the saldatnafieldhouse.org website today. Our IT department has been spending a lot of time trying to get that back up and running, but really, our efforts have focused on information, helpful information, additional context, and there's a large group of supporters who are volunteering their time, taking on different pieces of advocacy for championing a vote yes campaign. So, we will continue to generate FAQ documents and potentially another mailer, and we'll keep you updated with that information as we generate it. I mentioned before, but we, several city staff attended pieces of the infrastructure symposium last week in Anchorage. Mr. Cornelis and myself were in Anchorage on Wednesday. That was the day that Senator Murkowski and many presenters gave information in the morning, and then they also had the room with agency and then they also had the room with agency staff, state and federal, that we were able to go essentially door-to-door and visit with. I think Kyle and I tracked down every single person that we wanted to find, and then some, and had really good, important conversations. Part of our, the importance is just relationships, and it's great to walk into a room and see the DOT's head engineer for our region and for him to know who we are because we've, we've been working with him over the last decade. So we got to see everyone, we got information about some programs as they exist or what might be coming, and that was on Wednesday. Thursday, Mr. Allen from our utility department was up in Anchorage because they did a half-day kind of focus on water sewer projects. So he was there talking about our projects and, and meeting with DEC staff. And then Friday, CO Redstrom from our public works department was up in Anchorage because they had a half-day session on transportation projects. So he attended the DOT program. DOT has a call for projects right now. It's an intent to award, and it's their existing CTP and TAP programs. Those are the programs that funded our trail at the park and our upcoming project to finish out Reedout Avenue. So we're familiar with those programs, but every year they, they update their criteria, they solicit new project proposals, and so we've met internally to strategize on which of our projects we think will be most competitive and will be intending to submit projects for that. And I can tell you that one of the projects we're looking at is the Homestead Road Extension. We think that it might have a strong case to make in terms of some of the, the criteria that the DOT has for their projects. So that was second on my list to give you an update on. John, thank you for the ADU code presentation. Very well done. As you, as you know, John is really a thought leader in our state when it comes to planning and zoning issues, and I, I think he's bringing some smart considerations to the council and to the Planning Commission that'll really make a good impact in our housing. So I look forward to that legislation coming forward. And then the last I'll mention, one of the testifiers mentioned that we had gotten together. I had coffee with two people on Friday morning. I actually chased them out, they had already left after the Parks Board meeting, to make sure that people knew that they don't have to wait for legislation to come back in front of one of our boards in order to give us feedback, and extended an offer for folks to call me if you want to schedule time to have coffee. They took me up on that. We had a really good conversation. We were there for over an hour, and I think that those individual conversations, we come away with much better understanding of each other of the process. There are shared values at the top of what we're all trying to achieve. I have no doubt in my mind about that. And I did share, share with them just additional information about the process, and they were happy to know that we have been looking at code, we have been talking to people. And ironically, one of the suggestions that they gave me was that it would be helpful to be able to tell everyone in these meetings if I could report out a little bit of what we're doing, and, and I don't know if people are even still listening to this meeting, but we are working forward. Still, our plan is the timeline we had outlined before, but I know Andrew and Joel are, are working on this as well. So we're going to continue doing that, continue having helpful conversations with people as we move through the, the questions that we have to answer, and that concludes my report.
I just remembered what I forgot, the meeting yesterday for the Fieldhouse. Very well done. Any questions for the city manager? Saying none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing your raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience who'd like to speak on any item? And please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is David Bright, and my address is three eighty High Bush Lane, which is in Kenai, but I do work here in Saldana. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for the work that you guys do. I, I love Saldana. It's a great place, so many great facilities, and I really look forward and hope that the, the bond passes so that you guys can, we can increase the Fieldhouse. I do want to talk tonight, just briefly, about the controversy about the, the park. I think it's a great idea that, that you guys look at and, and review the policy, update it in any way possible, but I would urge you to please keep in, keep in mind the rights of all groups, all user groups. I'm here because I've seen a lot of, a lot of things on social media that I, I think are, are hate-based. A number comes out into my head frequently, forty percent. That is forty percent of the LGBTQ plus community has attempted suicide at one point in their life. The Pride event is, is an attempt to, to give them a safe place. As, as a teacher here locally, I had an interesting thing. We have, I work at Skyview, and we have some, some seventh graders that have come into the school in the last few weeks. Great time, you know? It's exciting to see them learn, to grow, a lot of enthusiasm. I like to stand in the hall and greet my students, wave, give them high fives, encourage them. And just the other day, I had a student come up to me and, in, in the innocence of childhood, say, "Are you a homophobe?" Took me aback, and I said, "No." She said, "Oh, good." And I said, "Why, why would you ask that?" She said, "Well, I just want to feel safe." And I said, "You can always feel safe in my classroom." We need to think about the people that are afraid to come forward and, and live their authentic lives sometimes. Many people in the community live a closeted life because they're scared of, of people and, and the bullying, the bigotry that they face. And so I appreciate your work. I know you have a hard job balancing all the different interests, but please keep in mind that there are, there are children out there, that whether we agree with them or not, they do identify as LGBTQ plus. And as a teacher, as a father, as a community member, I want to create a safe place for everyone. And, and some of the things that I've seen happen at these meetings has disturbed me. Thank you for the time.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on public comments? Saying none, I see one hand raised on Zoom, Larry. And if Larry could please state his name and address for the record, you're... Need to unmute Larry.
There we go. Is that better?
Yep.
All right. My name's Larry Opperman. I live on Endicott Drive in Saldana, and I, I was a little frustrated a little earlier. I tried to get on during the comment period for the Whistle Hill Special Assessment District. I was wholeheartedly for that, and I originally just wanted to answer a question of Ms. Hutchings when she was worried about how the Krulls will be charged user fees for that service. Well, it's, it's where typically, when you, when you look at water and wastewater, water in technically just about equals water out. And just to let everybody know, if someone on the council talks to the Krulls very often, it's very common to have a metering system on a wastewater system, typically like a flume and an ultrasonic gallon per minute equipment. There's magnetic resonance you can do it with. So I just wanted to say I was in support of the seventy-two, seventy-five percent funding, but the sixty-two point five percent funding was very, very good compromise. But I just wanted to mention that there are good ways to measure their flow that will be accurate, which is typically done on like a thousand, thousand gallons per surcharge. So I approve that. I think it was great as a citizen of Saldana. It's great for the city, and that's about all I wanted, was just to let you know there's, there's good, easy technological ways that the Krulls can be metered for their user fee for this project, and that, that's about all I have to say, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. And Mr. Cornelis, the Public Works Director, had mentioned that putting a meter on the well water coming in, and that would pretty much take care of the sewage end of it.
Sure, you, you bet. And there's, there, there's a bunch of ways to do it, and I used to do that for a business, and, and just, just wanted to let you know it's a, it's a, it's a great thing for the city, so thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else with a, seeing no one else here in the chamber wishing to speak, and I see no more hands raised, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council comments. Mr. Carey?
This has been an excellent meeting. We've covered a number of different topics. It's been a very good, civil and informative discussions, and I'm just very pleased and proud to be part of our council and community.
Mr. Chilson?
I had the pleasure last week to attend the opening ceremony for the Peace Crane Park, which has been put in behind Sohigh, directly behind my neighborhood and Justin's, and it's just been amazing to see that be built up over the last year or so and what the community has been able to do. It's truly, it's a beautiful thing, and I'm just very grateful to have that in our city, and I'm looking forward to seeing how they further develop that and getting some good meditation time there in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree. This is a, I think we covered a lot of ground. Feels like a lot has happened since we met last. I'll try to be brief, but it was great. I was able to take my family up to the state fair, and it was awesome to just see people gathered, and I ate way too much food that is not good for me. I was able to attend the event in the park for nine eleven. Being a parent of small children, I think, I, I actually, this sounds terrible, but I used to get mildly annoyed at my mother, and sorry, Mom, if you ever listen to this, but at her incessant teaching of history and of important days. As a child, I would just be like, "Mom, come on," you know? And now I find myself doing the same thing to my children, you know, why this day is important, and, and it's so great to, to see them grasp the importance of, of country and of sacrifice of especially our first responders and our military service members. I was also able to attend a conference in Anchorage on oil and gas development in the state. Really exciting, some of the things coming to our peninsula potentially in the future, and there's some really important developments going on for that. And I wanted to say, you know, great job on the, the promotion of the option to build this Fieldhouse. I've seen quite a bit of information coming out just into my own mailbox on social media, and I think it's something that I hear a lot of people being excited about again, and I just really, I hope that this is a, a project we're able to do going forward, and good job at getting out that information. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I would like to say also, great job on the Fieldhouse, and we've had so much community participation. They put me in charge of APOC, so I'm collecting the money and dispersing, and we've managed to take in fifty-two hundred dollars, which is really, really nice, and our signs are all paid for, and, and we will be getting a few more, and I do believe they're putting out some PSAs as well. And I hope everybody is sharing on Facebook when they see that come up because that's what it's going to take, is people knowing. And the only exciting thing I've done in the last week is I went to Anchorage and saw the Van Gogh immersion, which was really, really good. I loved the fact that there were small children playing in the middle of all of these lights that were going around, and we're quite excited about the floor changing all the time. So it was great. It was nice to see how we're progressing on the highway. Good night.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, it was a very good meeting and work session, and thank you for everyone who's stuck it out the whole, the whole night, almost the whole night so far. And I'm also looking forward to the Fieldhouse. I've got some good optimism, and I just noticed some signs popped up on my street as I left my house to come to the meeting today, so looking forward to that. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item thirteen, executive session. We have two items on the, for executive session. A is annexation, Superior Court appeal, City Attorney Brooks Chandler, AS forty-four point six, two point three, one, zero, C three, matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential. Item B is city clerk contract, AS forty-four point six, two point three, one, zero, C one, a matter of discussed in public would have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city of Saldana. In accordance with forty-four point six, two point three, one, zero, C three, attorney-client communications are matters which by law municipal charter ordinances are required to be confidential, therefore may be held in the executive session. And I got to read the other one, too. In accordance with Alaska statute forty-four point six, two point three, one, zero, C one, the city council may convene into an executive session to discuss a matter that the immediate knowledge of would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city. May I have a motion to enter into the executive session? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. I move to enter into an executive session to discuss the Superior Court written decision on the city of Saldana's appeal of the local boundary commission decision on the city's annexation petition with the city attorney and an executive session to discuss the draft city clerk contract. The portion of the executive session to discuss the Superior Court decision will include Mayor Whitney, city council members, city manager, Queen, city attorney Brooks Chandler, economic development planning director Zarneski, public works director Cornelis, and interim city clerk Hewitt. The portion of the executive session to discuss the draft city court contract will include Mayor Whitney and city council members. A brief break will take place between the two executive session items so the change of city personnel and attendance can take place.
May I have a second?
I'll s-
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. And for those attending through Zoom, the Zoom meeting will not be resumed after the executive session. After the executive session is over, the meeting will briefly resume at Saldana.org slash streaming, screening, streaming, and we'll be moving off the Zoom meeting now. Executive session.
I would move to take us out of executive session, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any objections to convene back into a regular session? Saying none, we are back into the regular session, and, Mr. Nelson, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to move to file an appeal of the Superior Court decision for city annexation if the final decision of the court is to enforce the decision of the local boundary commission.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Any discussion? I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
You have four yes votes, one no vote, and one absent.
Motion passes four to one with one, one absent. Okay, next, the item on the agenda is meeting announcements. September fifteenth, Airport Commission meeting at five thirty PM, and on September twenty-eighth, the city council meeting at six PM, and having no further business before us, meeting is adjourned.